All the North Plains Planning Commission meeting for February 12, 2025, order six o'clock. Please rise for the.
For the regions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I please get the roll call?
Thank you, Chair King.
Here.
Vice Chair Levante.
Here.
Commissioner House.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Farah.
Here.
Commissioner Nunnackam.
Here.
Commissioner Canodel is excused this evening, and your ex officio is Counselor Aaron Dumbrow.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, item number four is public comments. This time is available for anyone in the audience or Zoom to comment on any items of planning commission business that are not on the agenda. That's record show there's no one in the audience. Is there anyone on Zoom?
No hands.
No hands? All right, thank you. Item number five is approval of the minutes for January 8, 2025.
I move to approve the five minutes from January 12 or the January 8.
Second.
As written.
It's been approved by Commissioner Nunnackam, seconded by Commissioner Farah for approval of January 8 minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those.
Aye.
That's unanimously. Okay, we'll move into unfinished business. The TGM Code Assistance Program application. Dan, do you want to take over?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair King. Tonight, Rowan is going to provide you with a presentation on where this stands, and I'll give you a little bit of background on the program, so I will turn it over to Rowan.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. So as mentioned, this is your formal presentation. I know we've been teasing this for a few months now, but formal presentation on the Transportation and Growth Management Code Assistance Program, which staff intends to apply for soon. A little bit of background on the TGM program. I know many of you are familiar with the program. North Plains does currently have another TGM grant active for concept planning. That's one of the many areas that Transportation Growth Management focuses on. Ultimately, the program is collaboration between ODOT and the LCD to coordinate transportation land use planning, focused on sustainability and livability in our neighborhoods, cities, towns. There are many different programs. Obviously, I'm presenting Code Assistance tonight, a program through which we have our Concept Planning Grant. TGM also produces model codes, some different forms of assistance for cities, small, large, and everything in between. Specifically on code assistance, code assistance is a program to help local governments, small and large, identify and update regulations to promote efficient land use and transportation development. Communities can be selected for one or two phase project depending on the level of assistance needed. Typically, one phase projects are for smaller updates or updates that are specifically responding, say to a change in the ORSs or something like the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Program. Two-phase projects are generally aimed at communities that need broad updates, updates to entire districts, updates the entire code, things of a larger nature and scope. When a community is selected for code assistance, the work is carried out by consultants that are hired by TGM. Communities are not required to provide a cash or in-kind match, and the program is run through the ODOT procurement process, which is a collaborative effort between the community and the TGM ODOT staff to select appropriate consultant and scope the work so that the community receives the assistance they need, and TGM is able to cover the full fiscal responsibility. Now, in trade for not taking fiscal responsibility, local staff are expected to be heavily involved in the process. They're expected to help consultants become familiar with their communities. They're expected to help run public meetings and define the scope of work. And ultimately, local staff will be the ones to carry forward text amendments and updates to the code that have been selected by the consultants. A little bit deeper onto why code assistance was the program staff chose to go after for North Plains, and this is really rooted in the breadth of our concern for the current zoning and development code. First top-of-head issue that we noticed was the code usability. A lot of places in our code currently point people to the wrong direction, areas where applications are directed to go towards Lori, the city recorder, or approvals from the city manager, which is no longer city manager role. So these are sort of accuracy issues, issues with making things more difficult for the applicant or areas where our code just isn't up to date with the ORSs, and we oftentimes have to ignore certain codes or bend things in order to be in line with the state law. Second thing would be the housing and neighborhood character. As you are well aware from our last major land use application with green light development, the ORSs now require that most housing, anything that falls under needed housing, which is everything from single-family attached to high-density multifamily residential, must apply only objective standards, and the ORSs now even go further that there must be exceptions for certain housing types. So one way that North Plains can protect ourselves in a way and ensure that our standards are being upheld is to remove the subjective criteria and replace those with objective criteria. And in this, we can also take the opportunity to add criteria that will improve our residential zones and make sure that the standards that we have seen developed and that many people cherish in town stay that way and that we move into the future with a clear and objective focus. Next up would be the downtown commercial development standards. Back in the summer of 23, you all worked with the Downtown Improvement Plan to update a lot of the downtown development standards. There's still more work to be done there, and there's work to be done on our other commercial districts as well. There's been a lot of talk, as we've gone through the UGB process, about the need to buffer or transition between different commercial uses, residential uses, industrial uses. This would be an opportunity for us to move our code in that direction. And the last sort of smaller area would be the zoning map. There is an opportunity through code assistance to make zoning map amendments. Some areas that we've been looking at as potential candidates for this would be the downtown district. There's a few opportunities to rezone parcels that are not currently optimized. There's a few opportunities throughout town where certain parcels could be rezoned to increase housing capacity or fill in gaps in certain housing zones. And then there's also the opportunity for certain parcels to be rezoned for better development potential commercially or industrially, depending on the needs, and that's something that would be potentially elucidated during this code assistance process. A quick rundown of the statistics you'll find in your packets, a zoning and development code analysis that was performed in November and December of 2024. That was a quick overview to get some basic understanding of where our code stands, and after that, we were able to tell that about 9% of our code was having that accuracy issue, pointing people in the wrong direction or having standards that are no longer applicable. Around 13% was poor, very poor on objectivity for residential development and for other types of development. And the most shocking one was that 38% of our code is not functional. It doesn't move forward the goals of our comprehensive plan. There's areas where we could improve, and there's areas where things are quite blatantly out of line with the 2019 comprehensive plan and transportation system plan. So there's a lot of room for improvement. Overall, about 60% of the code could be updated and benefit from some sort of updates, some more large scale or removing sections and some just small corrections. And staff estimates that around 80% of code would be impacted in some way by a code assistance project. If the code isn't directly impacted, it would be impacted maybe by a change of its neighbor or reference. And so this boils down to the base points of our request to code assistance. We will be applying for a Type 1 Small Communities Code Assistance Project, a two-phase project which would be spread over around two years, anywhere between 18 and 24 months, giving six to 12 months for identifying the different project needs, code updates, community wants and needs, aligning with the comprehensive plan, and then about a year to actually draft those updates and let the consultants do the hard work there. This would address Chapter 155, our zoning and development code, and potentially that zoning map. Main focus, improve code accuracy, make sure we're compliant with Oregon Planning Law, and then secondary goal being to adapt our zoning districts and our regulations to better serve the comprehensive plan and to make sure that we're developing in an efficient manner, an attractive manner that really fits what the community has spoken about, what they desire and what they hope for North Plains to look like in the future. That was a lot of information. If you have any questions, now would be a great time.
Any question from the planning commission?
Okay. Last thing was going to be a request for a letter of support. Chair King has returned that to us at this time. So thank you for listening to us slowly bring this forward, and we're looking forward to applying. A last note, we will be taking this to a work session with City Council on Tuesday, February 18. They will be asked to adopt a resolution at that point, and that will be the last step before we formally submit to TGM for this program.
I apologize, but I do have a question on that. I don't understand what the scoring is and what it like, out of what, is it out of 20? Is it out of?
Sorry?
The scoring, how everything is broken down?
Oh, the scoring? Yeah, so the total scores were out of, I believe, 15. Each category was qualified for five points, accuracy, objectivity, and functionality.
So five made the highest. So five.
Any other question?
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to thank Rowan real quick. This has been a lot of work. And as you can see, there's a lot of deficiencies in our code, so I really think this is going to be something that is going to really help us in the future. And I think the big one that we can all agree on is because these housing projects are moving to only being reviewed under clear and objective standards, to make sure we have those standards that everybody would like, so we don't end up in the situation before where if it is a mixed-use project, we'll know exactly how much is supposed to be dedicated to commercial use. Well, you know, those type of standards will totally help us move forward and achieve the goals that not only the planning commission would like to see, but probably a lot of the community too. So thank you, Rowan, for all your efforts, and I really look forward to getting into this. I think it's going to be a great project.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number seven is new business. Does the planning commission have any new business?
Oh, I'm sorry, I would address. Yeah, I have a couple of dates. I can sure that I can do that now, or I can do it later when you have staff comments.
Okay. Let's just move it into staff comments.
Okay.
Okay, then we have the, actually, I'm going to change the order here a little bit on the agenda, and I'm going to move staff comments up, but first of all, we'll go to, it's the land use applications, city project, monthly report. Is there any questions or comments on that from the planning commission? During that, I just had a couple of questions. One of them is on the, and I don't know if you'll know this, but it's the 3J report. It's the one dated January.
Staff report to the city council?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It refers to a commercial street partition, but doesn't give any reference.
Which was street partition?
Commercial street partition.
Yes, there was one lot there. It was the lot that was on the west side of east, west of Kent property.
West.
Yeah.
The east of that.
So it was the lot that was on the west end of Kent property. That was partitioned.
Oh, okay. So on the corner. Oh, it's on the west end? The building's on the west?
It's on the west end of the building. It's the lot that upsets his property.
Okay.
Is that the one that was? A lot.
Yes, I, you had a question on that a while back, and I shared with you some information from their surveyor on how that went down. I'm happy to send that back to you so you can see.
I know how it went down. I have all the land records in my office. Yeah, it was partitioned by deed instead of doing a partition plan.
Some of that partitioning predated land use rules, which is why it happened the way it did. And again, I'm happy to send his email to you so you can see it again, so you can see his analysis. But that was what was shared back with the county surveyor as well, and there was an agreement on that, which is why they came forward with a partition.
Okay, and then the next one, just a question. It's got an address of 31590 Northwest Lennox Street, but actually, the property is 31555 Northwest Wosco Street. Is there some reason that it adds a different address? I know that the other one was the parent property, but it's the right away permit. It's actually on Wosco, right?
Is that the property next door to yours?
No, that's the property at the end of Wosco on Main Street.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, yes. We did address that property. Nothing has come forward at this time to develop that property. There've been a few inquiries.
That's what I'm asking is why is the address on Lennox?
We thought that it was going to be, thought we were going to get a building permit. It looked like it was moving in that direction. And as they were working with Brian Feeney on the H Street improvements, it appears that they changed their mind.
Okay, well, I'm just suggesting that that address is 31555 Northwest Wosco Street. It's where that.
That, I do believe that is what we did. You know, I can't remember off the top of my head, but that does sound correct.
Okay, because that's the way it is in the county map now, so. Okay, that's all I had on that. Is there any other questions or comments on the land use applications or the 3J report? Okay, I'm going to move, actually, I'm going to move number 11, staff comment up. And so staff, if you want to.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just show a couple of updates quickly on where some things are at. As you folks know, we have scheduled a joint work session with the city council on March 3 at 6:00 PM to go over what happened with the Relic Advisory Committee. So look forward to having that meeting with everybody and sharing the results of what came from that effort. To kind of continue that conversation, you folks may know that we did have our final rack or the last scheduled rack meeting last week on Thursday, and that was a pretty good meeting. It was well-attended by the rack participants as well as folks in attendance in the audience. It was our biggest audience that we had had for one of their meetings, so that was nice. We also had Counselor Pavan there as the ex officio, and Counselor Redding was in attendance in the audience. And one of the things that came from that that we were not expecting, we thought they might just speak generally and provide us with some type of broader kind of recommendation on maybe some principles or some guiding principles that people could use to move forward on a UGB expansion. But what ultimately came from it, and maybe you can pull that map up real quick. So this is what, this was the PowerPoint presentation that was shared with them. And as they went into their discussion, one of the things that they were asked is a few questions. And as they were answering those questions, they were looking at the maps that will come up here in a second. So they were, this was on the screen as they were answering the questions. And what the majority of the rack members said was that they supported the map at the top right, which is the housing focus map, if you will. And so we felt that to be rather shocking that 18 people, after a three-month process that had a wide range of backgrounds, all agreed on the same recommendation. And so that will be some of the information that will be coming forward during the work session on the third. So I just wanted to share that with you so you're aware of that. That was something that caught us by surprise. Another thing that's going to be happening in March is on the 16th, there's going to be a goal-setting retreat with the council. So that'll be a whole day event with staff and the city council, and I think that's going to be a wonderful event that will provide a lot of clarity on what the goals are for the next two or three years. So looking forward to that retreat and hearing more from the new city council on what their goals are for the upcoming couple of years. Another thing that's happening right now is Phase 5 of the Bryn Hill project is moving along pretty swiftly. Lennar has submitted upwards of 40 building permits right now. There's only 100 lots in Phase 5, so they are rapidly submitting building permits and moving towards the completion of the homes in Bryn Hill. In addition to the building permits that they're submitting for the homes in Phase 5, they will also be starting breaking ground on the park as well of Phase 5. And for those who aren't aware, there will be a footsoff court in that park as well as a half-court basketball court, and that was recommended by the Parks Board for that design. You know, there'll be benches too and some other amenities, but those are the two main amenities. And then lastly, we heard from Frank's Excavation this week, and they are still moving forward with their plans to develop that three acres next to the new city's public services building there, but they are rapidly approaching the expiration date of their land use approval. That expires on March 29. However, March 29 is a Saturday, so that would be pushed out to the 31st. So I do expect them to be submitting an extension request here within the next few weeks. And since you folks were the decision-making body on that application, that application will be coming before you for their extension. But I know that they are working with the county right now on getting their construction plans approved as well as Brian Feeney for extending public utilities into the site, so they are moving that forward. And that's all I have for you unless you have any questions.
Questions in the staff report? Commissioner, how you were on the rack that you want to give us your update on?
You know, when I, I want to thank everybody for asking for the interrupt because it was, it was idle. It really was, because we had people that voted no. We had people that didn't live in the city. We had people that didn't vote. We had people from within the city. And so when it started, there was a lot of negative outcome. People didn't want growth. People didn't want this. And by the time it got through and they understood what the city was trying to do and how they were trying to accomplish it, it was eye-opening to them. That was the how we need to know was this. If we throw that out and we went away from it, we would have to start over, and the cost, you know, there's cost with everything. Plus, what the state could do in the future, in the next couple of years, with the density of how we could be shoved with apartments, we could be shoved with things we do not want. And by accepting that, I think everybody could, after we listened, listened and went back through, everybody's, the mentality of everybody was, we want to plan our own city. If we're going to bring it in, then let us plan and have the opportunity to do that. And the consensus of the group was, without going west of Gordon, we can have our parks, we can have the lake, we can have, make a community center, which would help the city, but we can have the industrial commercial property along Jackson, which is far enough away from the city that's not bringing the traffic into the city. And I think by looking at it that way, people understood that we all have an opportunity, all of us, to make the city better. And by accepting that, we can all work to make it better. But if we wait, it could be shoved down our throats. So it was amazing to me. When it came about, everybody went through and spoke. I mean, it was unanimous. Everybody agreed that was the right way to go. And it shocked, I thought there was going to be a lot of negativity, and there was none. It was, everybody was on the same plane that if we're going to do this, we need to be smart about it. We need to plan it, and we need to accept, you know, you're looking at 20 years. You're not looking at five years. You're looking at 20, I'll probably be dead, half that group will probably be dead in 20 years. So we're looking at the future of our, of the people in the city. I think it's right that we did. I think it was a very thought-out, well-planned, and it was amazing.
I appreciate that, Tom. I couldn't agree more. I thought that was pretty much most of our assessments too. I mean, we brought such a diverse group together, and it was really not on the same understanding of things going into that, but to see how it ended and to see everybody have a consensus on what they thought the city needed to do for the future, it was pretty remarkable.
Well, that was shocked me a lot of, was really shocking. It was one, you know, I have an attitude, and my attitude was, I felt nobody outside the city should have an opinion. I mean, it was tripped in my. But when they all fell in line, when they understood what was trying to be accomplished and how it was trying to be accomplished, even though they were outside of our city, they all agreed, and that was amazing.
And to that point, there's even a couple of folks in the audience that were living outside of the city that also agreed with that assessment, so. You know, there, I think there's three or so people that spoke from the audience, four maybe. And so, yeah, it was, it was pretty incredible outcome.
Yeah. So can I ask just one question on that, the mapping that, you know, everybody was in favor of? Is it going to be like last time where the map came forward to us and we had no ability to make any modifications to it? It's just we chose that, and that's what had to be sent forward to council? Or do we have the?
Are you talking about where, are you asking if we move forward with the UGB expansion, what that would look like, how the map would be formed?
Yes.
Okay. You know, right now, you know, we're looking to the council, right, to find out from them guidance on how we need to move forward. If the council agrees that they want to continue this process and continue to look at a UGB expansion and move something forward, ultimately, what would happen, it would either be by continuing the rack and having more meetings with them to get a recommendation from them, but ultimately, there'll be some type of proposal that comes forward to the planning commission, right?
Right, but that happened last time.
Well, I'm not, just give me a minute, give me a minute. And I'm sharing you with you my experience from when I was on the planning commission at the city event and held that one, and I don't see any reason why it would be different here. And so when you, when the city comes forward with a proposal, that's the opportunity for the public and the planning commission to chat about it and talk about what they like and what they don't like, right, and how to shift things around. And that would be the same thing with the concept planning as well. And so depending on how many meetings you feel you need to have to vet all the issues and concerns that you hear from the public to come up with a recommendation for how you believe the boundary line should shift, that will be up to you folks. You folks will have the opportunity to control that and make your own recommendation, but we need to bring forward a starting point, right? We have to have some type of application. You know, when you do a UGB expansion, you're actually doing it. a comprehensive plan update. And so we have to have some type of application on file with the city planning department. So we can, one, share that with the state that we're going to be doing a U G B expansion, and this is our file number for that application. And two, we need to share some type of starting point with everybody so people can have something to comment on. And so that would be kind of the starting point for the planning commission. You would hold your meetings, you would discuss the proposal, you would decide if you like it or not, you would decide how you would want to change it. And then those recommendations, we would move forward to the city council. And the city council would have the same opportunity. They would hold their meetings, they would take the input from the public, they would look at your recommendation and they would make a decision as to whether or not they want to alter it or move that forward. And then once we get the approval from the city council, that's what we would bring forward to the county.
And I think we talked at the meeting with Sunset Bridge and industrial commercial, there needs to be a buffer in there. And we've all thought of my way of just interacting. You don't want business up to
This isn't, this isn't the concept plan. This is just the acreage in general. Just, I'm just talking, so the last round that came through, we didn't, our body had no ability to change any of the boundaries. It was what it was.
We, that might have been under a different regime. As you well know, I got here on September twenty-second of twenty-two, and much of the heavy lifting had already been done. And there was a different city manager working at the city and they drove that process forward. I was more of a spectator at that point. I'm not a spectator anymore. And I will make sure that we have a very comprehensive public process and any recommendation that you guys want to make, you're entitled to make.
Right, as long as we get input, because all the input that I gave at the last rack meeting, nothing changed and it's all presented the same.
Again, I would imagine in terms of any changes that would come from a planning commission, it would probably be something that you guys would vote on. And make sure that the whole planning commission is in agreement with those changes or the recommendation as a whole. And then we would make any adjustments that came from that recommendation.
Hey, Steve, can you get me oriented on the status of the process? So what I understand is the relit committee has finished their assessment. They've unanimously agreed on one version. Have they recommended that formally to city council?
No.
Okay, is that the next step? Or what is the next step for the relit committee?
That's a great question, Commissioner Miller. I think we're going to find that out on the joint work session. What is the next step? Again, we were not expecting the rack to make a recommendation on a layout, but that's what happened at the meeting. Again, we thought they might be making more of a recommendation on kind of some deadlines, if you will, on how to move forward. But they felt that there was enough information to be able to recommend that housing production map as an alternative to consider for a U G B expansion.
Okay, so it's possible, it's possible and maybe even likely their next step will be to make a formal recommendation to city council.
That could be something that comes from the work session. I'm not expecting a formal recommendation. But they may make that. I mean, that could be something that they say during the work session, that this is our formal recommendation.
Okay.
Well, I honestly
And the work session is on what date?
March third at six P M.
Oh, that one. Okay, yep, I got it. All right, thanks. That answers my question.
Okay.
Any other questions of Commissioner Howt? Okay, on the rack. I want to thank Commissioner Howt for his extra service. Appreciate it. Also, just wanted to say, at least my opinion is that the map that's shown should only be boundary lines and the acreage amounts for residential and employment lands.
But that's the problem.
But concept planning should then take over and figure out exactly where those properties, you know, the zonings lie, so.
Appreciate that clarification. That is really the crux of this. And I think that's been, it's been a very hard message to deliver to folks because as we're going through this, you know, people wanted to try to get some sense of where might the residential lands go or where might the economic lands go? And so those shadings were placed on the maps to try to give people some general idea where things could potentially lay out. But to Chair King's point, at this point, we are only trying to establish the boundary on how many acres needs to come in to accommodate both residential and economic plan needs. And once that happens, once we have that boundary, we will use those T G M grant dollars that we received from the state to do an intensive concept planning process. And that is really where you're going to start throwing down zoning districts. You're going to start saying heavy industrial should be here, light industrial should be here, high-density residential should be here, parks should be over here. That's what will come from that process. And I imagine that process will be well-attended by the public. And I believe that the planning commission will have a lot of input on what that looks like in terms of the final zoning map or map that could come from that process that goes to the city council. So I hope people can be patient and understand that it is a two-step process and that both of these things are important, but we can't get to the concept planning until we know where we're going to go with our boundary. So we have the land identified for what we need to plan for.
Well, the good news is they, that at least that drawing does have a boundary. It goes an extra step as well, but it at least has the boundary.
That's correct. The map that was recommended by the rack does identify a boundary.
Yep.
How much acreage is in that boundary? How much acreage is in that boundary?
So you have a hundred, hundred and twenty-seven acres plus the forty plus forty-two, and Rowan's capping that up right now for us.
Six hundred and forty-nine acres.
Down from the, what was
It was eight hundred.
It was eight fifty. Okay, so six fifty versus eight fifty, something in that range.
Something I was helping that one up too, but yeah, it is about a two-hundred acre plus or minus difference.
It's two fifty, I think.
Difference. It's a two-hundred and fifty acre difference between the two proposals.
Two hundred.
Just a minute. Sorry.
Two hundred and five, sorry.
There's two hundred and five acres difference, two hundred and five acres. I apologize for the confusion there. So between the original proposal that went to the referendum and and the proposal that the rack recommended, the difference in acreage is two hundred and five acres.
Because all the maps that were presented for housing, it just said less than a hundred and twenty-seven acres or whatever it was. It didn't actually specify the acreage. So there, I don't know if you don't specify an acreage, how you can show how much land, because you need to know how much acreage.
Well, the good news about that, the good news about that is that was not the map that they recommended. So in the map that they recommended, it showed the hundred and twenty-seven acres. The map that you're referring to was the economic lands map that was heavy on economic lands and light on the residential lands. And that was the one that said, you know, uncertain. Because even though to destroy King's point, or sorry, Chair King's point, during the meeting that we had yesterday with the, with the, what am I thinking of?
Chamber meeting.
Chamber.
Yes.
Chamber, with the chamber. The map shows that there's more than a hundred and twenty-seven acres, but the map also shows that that's not what's being set aside for residential lands. And so if people wanted to go with the economic land focus map, one of the things they'd have to consider is making a sacrifice of some of those economic lands to bring in possibly more residential lands so we can accommodate the need of housing that's identified in the housing needs analysis. So we would not have to scrap that. And so there would be some trade-offs with that map.
I just wanted to make sure the mapping matched, because that was one of the conversations I had with Steve, and he recognized that the maps were incorrect in the fact that if you have a spatial area, you should know the acreage within that spatial area.
He didn't have it copped up, you're correct. And that's what he indicated. But again, the map that rack recommended was this map. And we know that in this map, we have the hundred and twenty-seven acres to accommodate the housing need that's identified in the housing needs analysis.
Chair King, it sounds like you will have a lot of attendance on March third.
Well, it's a council meeting, so somebody else can run. Okay, if there's nothing else on the rack, we'll now move to planning commission comments. And are there any Commissioner Miller? Anything?
I, no. I have a question.
Okay.
Have we accepted any Bryan Hill, a hundred percent?
Is it a hundred percent?
Yeah, the reason I ask, go through there, none of the curbs are painted for every fire hydrant. The city just went through and withdrew all our streets and painted the curves identifying no parking in front of fire hydrants. But there is not one painted in that development. And I don't think the city should have to pay for that.
No, let me check with Three J. They really are the ones that are monitoring that.
Well, I'm walking, so I'm walking going, where is it? Not there.
I mean, if any, if any phase, it would be one. But let me, let me follow up with Three J and I'll send an email out as I've been in the past.
The city has been marked now in the last year. They came through a painted red and identified where fire hydrants are, but nothing of the new developments painted.
Well, the question, one of the questions will come up, was it a requirement? Because I know in the development for the hosted, there was no requirement. At least Three J didn't require any painting in front of the hydrant.
Well, that's what I'm going to have to do. And I'm going to have to go back through and look at the condition of approval and look at the development agreement and chat with Brian Feeney a little bit and make sure everybody's on the same page. But I appreciate the question and I'll follow up for you and get a response.
The other thing is, I think I've mentioned this before too, is that I don't think in any subdivisions it's required to have mailboxes. And I think that's an important issue. Or you say That's, it should be part, I mean, the city should be, when we do a development, it should be a requirement that they satisfy postal requirements.
Because I understand what you're saying. As somebody who's worked in it before, I can tell you that homeowners are very cognate of the mailboxes and they do work closely with the postal service to make sure they get the lock boxes that they install, the large lock boxes located where the post office wants them. Because they do want to make sure that the residents who are buying their homes have a place to get their mail. So it's high on their radar. But I understand what you're saying, and that could be something that comes out of the new code update.
Well, what I'm suggesting is not always is the developer the builder. And the developer probably doesn't care about mailboxes, but the builder probably does care about mailboxes. So if you make it a requirement of the developer, then the builder doesn't have to worry about it.
I understand. I think that would be something if we're going to go down that path, we can chat with the planning commission about that with the new code update. Because that's where we need to be put.
Right.
Maybe when you walk through that, they have the ramps to go across the street. And it breaks out and has the bumps for handicapped. They don't line up. If I was blind and I went across side intersections and I walked straight, I wouldn't come up another ramp. It's three feet north.
What intersection is it?
Several of them over there. About in the middle.
Yeah.
Or something, they don't line up. And I'm going, well, for a handicapped person or a blind person walking across, why don't they line up?
Yeah, anything internal, I agree, it should line up. There could be some offsets. If they're crossing like north or going across an existing street where maybe the right-of-way wasn't aligned with
It's inside the development.
Yeah, okay.
The way they, they formed it, where they're replacing all the concrete right now, all the sidewalks that are bad and everything else is right in there. It's strange. Yeah, just shock.
No, I appreciate it. Again, I'll follow up and get back to you on both of these and let you know when I find out.
Yeah, I guess I bring up a question for me too. Are the parks, the parks were were named a while back. Do they have their park names and stuff up there under parks already? Or is the city going to be responsible for that or?
Sounds like another question for the Parks Board.
That's an H O A park, so it should be the builder, I assume.
I, that's the first I've heard of these parks being named like that. So, I mean
That was named like three years ago or four years ago, somewhere in there.
Yeah, like I said, that's the, I've only known them as Phase One, Two, Three, Four, Five Parks. I've never heard anybody reference a naming of each park before. So let me follow up on that.
Okay, thanks. Andy, okay, go ahead.
I just have one question, since we're looking at the map for the rack, the with a potential new park around the lake area, the Manmade Lake out there. Only because this was a huge issue years and years ago in the skate park here. City insurance, it might be something the city wants to look at for insurance around to own park around a water feature like that.
I know that the city has dived into that a little bit. Not only have we looked into insurance for a skate park, but I know that when Andy was here, that he was looking for insurance around that lake. Not only by including it into a park, but also the maintenance and the structural integrity of the land dam there that they have, the everything dam. And so I know that he looked into both of those. Where that sits right now, I'm not sure. There probably is more research that's needed, but I think that would be a good question for the city manager.
That could be a huge financial undertaking for the city. I mean, Tiger, I mean, they have all these lakes, they could probably tell you what it takes for maintenance on them, but.
And one more. If, if, if it goes, and yet we get accepted and we go after that, there's water rights that they pump water out of Dairy Creek all the way to that lake. And I don't know if anybody knows that, but it's there. And we want those water rights.
Are those water rights transferable?
Fill with the sun. They piped it all the way.
Right, but I'm wondering if it changes hands and it's no longer used for farming, if that changes the use of it, if the state will take away the water rights.
It's a water right.
We'll make sure to work on all this.
I mean, just keep that in the back of your mind. That's something that's valuable to the city.
I worked with a lot of water rights when I was over in central Oregon. I'm pretty familiar with them. And you're right. You don't want to give them up.
All the way.
You don't want to give them up, but you can keep them. I agree.
All right. Does the planning, are there any comments or questions for our ex officio, Councilor Dumbrow?
I would just move to welcome him to the planning commission.
Hey, that's my job.
Oh, sorry.
Welcome to the planning commission. And now we have our city council comments, so Councilor Dumbrow, anything from you?
I appreciate being here. I've been watching a lot of these online, so it's good to be in person. And I'm just taking a lot of notes and I try to share as much as I can with council in an extreme amount of revenue.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, if there's no other commission business, our next regular meeting is March the seventh. We do have a joint meeting at March the third at six o'clock. Our regular meeting will be also at six o'clock here. And with that,